Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to start the meeting. Mr. Clerk, would you please take roll call?
Dave Abdulla.
Here.
Bill Bazey.
Here.
Robert Coniston.
Here.
Lisa Hicks Clayton.
Here.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell.
Here.
Ray Muscat.
Here.
Tom Wenzel.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to have to do things a little different. Before I go any further, I need to vote to do our agenda out of order because we do have a veto that applies to this meeting. And so, in order to continue with the meeting, we have to take a vote on the actual veto. So, I'm going to ask the members here if I would like to move 8B and 9C. 8B would become 1B and 9A would become 1C.
Minus three vetoes.
And that's per our policy and procedures. And, you know, because of the veto, we have to do this to entertain the veto. Madam Chair, repeat. 9A becomes... 8B becomes 1B, because that has to be first, because that is for vetoing this meeting. And then, 9C...
I see.
I'm sorry.
9A.
9A becomes 1C.
Madam Chair, you are aware that I have three separate vetoes.
Yeah, I know. It was written in one paper. I can split them up. I was going to ask you on that, if that's okay.
They're all separate.
How can you veto a meeting while you... He puts...
Well, we can't start the meeting until...
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move that item 8B become 1B and 9A become 1C as spoken in your statement.
Second.
Second by Councilman Wenzel. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. At this point, the mayor has submitted a veto message concerning three actions from the City Council during our special meeting on Wednesday, July 24, 2019. In his veto, the mayor indicates that he is vetoing the three motions from the council. The mayor does not have the power to veto motions under the Charter, just resolutions and ordinances. Further, the mayor submitted one veto statement covering all three actions instead of providing a separate veto for each action as required by the Charter, Section 7 dot 13. And the Charter says, "The clerk must submit the mayor's veto or vetoes." Here, the mayor combined three actions of the council into one veto message. Nevertheless, and to avoid any question about the intent of the council, we will vote to override each of the three resolutions as if the mayor vetoed them separately. Further, by vetoing the resolution which amended our meeting schedule, it can be anticipated that the mayor would now claim that his meeting was not properly called. However, the mayor then submitted additional items to be added to this agenda. Additionally, if the mayor were allowed to veto the council resolution setting our regular council meeting schedule under Charter, Section 6 dot 4, then the council would be prohibited from ever meeting. Since the interpretation of the Charter cannot be correct, it is clear that this meeting is proper. Our change to the regular meeting schedule was also called pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15 dot 2653, governing changes in the regular meeting schedule, which only requires that notice of the change be posted within three days. Therefore, proper notice was provided of today's meeting in accordance with both state and the City Charter. Finally, the city attorney, Gary Miyaki, was provided an advanced copy of the revised retainer agreement as well as the general resolution. Mr. Miyaki did not raise any concerns with the revised retainer agreement prior to the council vote last week. He also failed to raise a concern with the resolution to revise the regular meeting schedule despite actively participating in that discussion. To now raise concerns with the retainer agreement to the mayor is a legal conflict of interest, and the council was never asked to waive that conflict. Under the Charter, Mr. Miyaki is supposed to represent the City Council and the mayor. By failing to raise concerns with the City Council before our vote and then to raise concerns to attempt to justify a mayoral veto demonstrates a clear legal conflict. I will now ask the clerk to place resolutions 19 dash 291, 19 dash 292, and 19 dash 293 on the agenda for the council's override votes.
Madam Chair.
Councilman...
You said... I'm sorry. You said, "Resolu-- 19..."
It's 19 dash 291, 19 dash 292, and 19 dash 293.
Counselor Chair, you talking about from the previous meeting?
Those are my...
It's on here. It's on the...
It's on the agenda.
Got it.
I see.
I've got mine.
I see yours. I was looking for the same thing.
First of all, we will vote on the veto to not have this meeting. The mayor has vetoed this meeting, and so, we need to reintroduce the motion to have us go forward with this meeting.
And that's motion 19 dash 293.
Yes, 19 dash 293, because it was the last one that we did last week at our special meeting.
So, Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
Yeah, I move council to readopt the resolution to amend the regular meeting schedule that Dearborn Heights City Council has outlined in 19 dash 293.
Support.
Support by Councilman Muscat. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, just real briefly, I don't object to the fact that this council has the right to hold meetings. This is a special meeting, not a regular meeting.
This is a regular City Council meeting.
It's a special meeting.
It's not.
Counselor Chair.
We are allowed to do this. Go ahead, Councilman Muscat.
Counselor Chair, we, as a body, voted to have this as a regular scheduled meeting. These are our meetings, council meetings, strictly, and it's... Nothing wrong with it. I've researched this. I've called parliamentarians. There's... It's ridiculous to veto this meeting. Absolutely ridiculous. How can you veto a... Something that the council came together, voted seven-nothing to change a schedule? How? What legal right do you have? You have none. And to say this is a special meeting, call it what you like. It's a regular scheduled meeting as adopted by City Council. That's how I feel.
Okay, yeah. This is the Dearborn Heights City Council Regular Meeting Schedule Amendment Resolution that we are entertaining right now, meaning we can continue on with this meeting. We do need what is called a super veto, which would mean a minimum of five out of seven people would have to vote for that. If we don't, the meeting will end right now. So, at this point, let's move forward. Is there any further discussion?
Is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Does anybody have a copy of 19 dash 293?
I do.
It was in the package. It was sent to you by email.
Yeah, it was in email. Plus, it was in your package. Yeah.
I don't have a copy of it.
It's from our previous meeting. I got you.
It should be in the minutes, too.
I'm looking in the minutes.
It's in the email.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdulla?
It was in the email that came from the clerk via line. There's this sheet right here.
It's also in your minutes from July 24.
So, this motion, as it reads, is... It was by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Bazey, to adopt the resolution to amend the regular meeting schedule of the Dearborn Heights City Council, whereas the Dearborn Heights City Council wishes to amend its regular meeting schedule to add a third regular meeting of the month of July 2019. Now, therefore, be it resolved that pursuant to Section 6 dot 4 of the Charter, council will amend its regular meeting schedule to hold an additional regular meeting on Tuesday, July 30, 2019, at 6:00 P.M. And be it finally resolved that the notice will be provided with no less than three days' notice, which it was. Our clerk took care of that. Any further questions? Thank you. Okay. At this point, let's vote to see if we're going to continue on with this meeting. All those in favor of this resolution, 19 dash 293, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Let's do a roll call. Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Coniston?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey?
Yes.
Maxwell Malinowski is yes. Councilman Abdulla?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilman...
Wenzel.
Wenzel.
Yes.
Not man.
Yes.
That's what it gets for coming in at the last minute. Councilman?
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Okay, so, we have seven. So, we have a super veto. We have overridden that veto. Next on our thing we have for consideration, let's see.
Madam Chair. Which one do you have?
The 2... 2 dash...
I got the...
Yes, Councilman Abdulla?
Those will probably go back to where they were initially, because we're still doing the meeting, so they'll go back to where they initially were, and we start...
Well, because it was done in one body, the veto.
Oh, okay.
That's why we have to pull it up. If it was three separate ones, we could put them down.
No, but I thought we talked about treating them like they were three separate ones.
But they're still written up as one. So, we're going to act like it's three, but legally, it's one, so we got to treat it as one. Okay. The second veto was in regards to... Let me see.
Veto to readopt the motion, so they had the three...
How are we going to do this? Because we've got 293. We've already super vetoed. Let's go back to 19 dash 291. That's resolution to authorize the retention of Ottenwes, Tewill, and Shank PLC as special legal counsel of council to the corporation counsel and retainer agreement.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
I move the council to readopt the resolution to authorize the retention of Ottenwes, Tewill, and Shank PLC as special legal counsel to counsel to the corporation counsel and to authorize the firm to file action necessary as outlined in 19 dash 291.
Support. Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdulla?
Just for clarification, and I've had this discussion before, and I'd just like, just for full transparency, because we're having a separate meeting on this again, just want to say my personal disagreement with the audit. I have no problem with any type of audit. My biggest disagreement right now at this particular point is based on the cost it's going to cost with the audit. So, just a couple of points I want to point out. I'm okay with the audit. I disagree with the cost. And at this particular point, we still don't know what the specific cost is going to be, although I do know we approved the cost at the end, but we still don't have no type of projection. I've asked multiple, multiple times if it's going to be $5,000, $50,000, $200 million, $5 billion, whatever it happens to be. At this point, we still don't know. And I know they're going to come to us to approve a bill, but by that particular point, they've already done the work, so they're going to come to us hypothetically with whatever that bill happens to be. And now, what are we going to do? Go back and get sued by them for the fact that we're not paying them for a bill that we didn't initially authorize the exact amount? That's one of my objections. Second objection, again, connected to that, is how much is this going to cost? We still don't know. We still don't have an idea. I've seen all kinds of numbers thrown around, and they go anywhere from Troy's $70,000, which I think the mayor put it in his veto, all the way up to, I've heard, you know, a million, et cetera, being thrown around. So, I don't know. I'm not an attorney to figure out how much the cost is, but that's something that's concerning for me. That's one of the reasons why I keep voting no on this. The third thing that I want to point out is, although we a lot of times disagree, I want a lot of people to understand this is a part of the checks and balances of our United States government. Not, you know, if we had seven people agreeing on everything or seven people disagreeing on everything, that would not be good for the residents. So, I think it's kind of good to get, if nothing else, you know, the opposite point of view, although I believe in my personal point of view. And also, like we talked about, capping the time on this thing. Now, our council, Gary Miyaki, had had some concerns way initially when we first started with this thing as far as whether this was legal or not, and I know we went with the first lawsuit, and then it was thrown out based on the same comments that he had mentioned. With that being the case, one of the concerns that he's got right now, and again, I'm not an attorney to determine this, but his concern is whether this can be transferred over to the next body, so it's not capped as far as time or as far as dollars. I think we ought to take his concerns into consideration. And lastly, I will again say, because the first lawsuit was not authorized by the council as a body, I don't believe, again, they should be paid, and I brought that up before, but still in this current retention agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Just to echo what Councilman Abdulla said, also, we do have city auditors, plant Moran. The council secures and hires them to do the audit. They audit our books. They audit many other cities' books. They're bound by certain requirements, ASCPAs, for audits. There's talk about a conflict because their familiar name, same thing with Gary Miyaki, because he's the city attorney having a conflict. It's just not the case. But I don't understand why we don't hire another accounting firm to do the audit of the audit and why we're hiring this law firm and then trying to make the audit of the audit confidential. There's just no reason for it. And also, I agree with Councilman Abdulla. There shouldn't be any payment from the taxpayers for the first lawsuit that was filed without any vote or notice to any of the council members. That is just outrageous.
Madam Chair.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Councilman Bazey?
I'm kind of surprised that they keep... Both council members keeps bringing up the issue that they did not authorize and they should not pay for the attorney's fees. However, the mayor, from the lawsuit against the mayor, actually, I mean, it is in the paper, so I'm not saying anything is not in the paper. He made the decision to hire another director, and that's what there's...
No, no. It's still the same. It's still the same. However, it was not...
The attorney is right there.
Yeah, but it was never addressed, you know, and the council did not approve it, and I mentioned it two meetings ago, so that's the thing. You guys pick and choose what you want to approve or disapprove, so that's all I have to say on that one.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mayor?
I followed the Charter, and I went through corporation counsel to hire corporation counsel to protect the mayoral position and my position, and that was completely legal. I did... I contemplated that the council, and there is yet to be an admittance by the chair particularly as to her hiring the first lawsuit against me. Many of the council members have asked, "Who authorized it?" You have refused to say you did. And I went through corporate counsel. This council did not follow the Charter.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, at this point, we will vote on... This is 19 dash 291, resolution to authorize the retention of Ottenwes, Tewill, and Shank PLC as special legal counsel of council to the corporation counsel and retainer agreement. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Councilman Coniston and Councilman Abdulla are opposed. Let's take a roll call on that. Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat is yes. Councilman Coniston?
No.
Councilman Coniston is no. Councilman Bazey?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey is yes. Malinowski Maxwell is yes. Councilman Abdulla?
No.
Councilman Abdulla is no. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton is yes. Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Yes. At this point, we do have a super veto. We have overridden the mayor's veto.
Super veto.
Our next is motion 19 dash 293.
292.
I'm sorry. 292. I'm sorry. Okay, 292. That's to authorize Ottenwes, Tewill, and Shank PLC to file appeal.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey?
I move the City Council to authorize the law firm of Ottenwes, Tewill, and Shank PLC to file an appeal of the court's July 17, 2019, decision in the matter of Dearborn Heights City Council versus Daniel S. Peleco, case number 19 dash 007240 dash AW, as outlined in 19 dash 292.
Support. Support by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdulla?
I brought it out earlier, and I'm going to bring it out again. We've had multiple discussions about when they're going to be paid for, how much they're going to be paid, and when officially it starts, and the language is still in here that says this starts from day one that they're going to be paid. And we had discussion, talking into some of the details, but we talked about striking it out, if you recall. So, I just want to understand, we make these objections? You listen, and that's good. I respect the fact that you listen. I appreciate that. But what happens next? Are we getting these out, or are you basically saying we're not going to?
I don't recall everybody agreeing with that. I know you wanted it out. I know Councilman Coniston, but no one else had...
Okay, so, for transparency, everybody's not in agreement that... So, everybody's in agreement on the council that we should pay them from day one even though they were not authorized by us as a council as a body?
They were authorized by council as a body to represent us, and that was part of the...
From day one?
Yes, from the day that we voted on it as a body. I know we all didn't agree on it, but as a body, we did pass that.
No, no, no. I'm talking about the first, first lawsuit. Again, I and some, without naming specific council people, did not even know about it because it had not been discussed whatsoever. And then, suddenly, it was in the papers and social media, there was a lawsuit that had transpired like a couple days back, like, done. So, I knew nothing about it, no email, no conversation, nothing, zero zip nada. With that being the case, I just don't understand. My brain's not understanding how we pay them since we didn't authorize it as a body. So, if you guys are okay with paying them, I respect the vote. I'm just voting no on that.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston?
Briefly, regarding the appeal, number one, the appeal would take a year or two minimum. Number two, you wouldn't file now a third lawsuit and also take an appeal of the decision of the second lawsuit. You would do one or the other. It's just duplicate efforts and extra attorney fees.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, at this time, let's take a vote. We are voting on 19 dash 292 to authorize Ottenwes, Tewill, and Shank PLC to file an appeal as outlined by Councilman Bazey. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
The ayes have it. Let's take a roll call. Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat is a yes. Councilman Coniston?
No.
Councilman Coniston is no. Councilman Bazey?
Yes.
Councilman Bazey is yes. Malinowski Maxwell is yes. Councilman Abdulla?
No.
Councilman Abdulla is no. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton is a yes. And Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel is a yes. We do have a super veto. We have overridden all three vetoes that were written for this meeting. At this point, I'm going to ask everybody to stand to Pledge of Allegiance. Lisa Muscat will be joining, will be leading us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay. Next, we have agenda approval.
Counselor Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move that we approve the agenda for the July 30, 219, regular scheduled meeting of City Council with the movement of 8A to 1B and 9A to 1C as outlined.
Second.
Support by Councilman Bazey?
If... Just wanted to make sure. Was it 1A that we were changing?
We changed 8A to 1...
Because I was on... I thought it was 8B.
8B.
8B, excuse me. Yes, 8B to 1C. And 9A to 1...
Correct.
No, 9... Okay. It will be...
8B.
Will be 1B.
1B. And 9A becomes 1C.
1C.
Yes.
Correct. Because 8A was from McMillan.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bazey. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have approval of minutes. This is minutes from the regular meeting of July 23, 2019. Madam Chair. Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
May we take the July 24th and 23rd together?
A and B? I don't have any problem with it. Does everyone... Are we okay with that? Okay, then, we will also include 4B, which is minutes from the special meeting of July 24, 2019.
Very, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Move to approve the minutes from July 23, regular meeting of Dearborn Heights City Council and the special meeting from July 24 as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdulla. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Wenzel?
I overheard a comment here. I think we should do those separately.
Okay.
Just to make it official.
Let's... You know what? Let's... Yeah, let's do it. I'm going to redo it, Lisa. Okay.
Do you want to amend your motion, Lisa?
All right, we would amend the motion to be only for the minutes of the regular meeting, July 23, 2019, Dearborn Heights City Council.
Support.
Support by Councilman Abdulla. All those in... Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have minutes from the special meeting of July 24, 2019.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdulla?
I move that we approve the minutes from July 24, 2019, special meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council as outlined. Unfortunately, I didn't give an exact one. As submitted.
Second.[1545.20] Second. Seconded by Councilwoman Hicks Clayton. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have public hearings and comment on agenda items. We ask you come to the podium, limited to two minutes, state your name, and agenda items only. Is there any comment on agenda items? Okay, at this point, we will move on. Next, we have fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I move council approve item 61 to 613, as submitted.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Abdullah. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
I'd like to know what's the difference with the worksman's comp between two different companies? You have 62 for one company, for the amount of $10,500. And the next one is another company, I'm sorry, 63, and in the amount of $7,500. And the mod budget before payment is the same on 1, 62, then 63.
I can speak to the Broadspire invoice, because they're the third-party administrator of the actual claims, worker comp claims. So if someone needed a diagnostic test, they would get that approval, and then would get the claim, negotiating the best price that they could for the city. So if you had a diagnostic center, like an MRI scan, they would work out a good price, and then that's what the city would pay if an employee needed an MRI. That's what Broadspire does. Then the other one is Mike Meldigan, that's his insurance company, and he's the individual that does speak in front of the council body and gives updates on a couple of items. And I notice, obviously, it's under workers' comp.
Yeah, Mr. Meldigan came in for the information of the council, and he is shopping our workers' comp, but he would like to, the MMRA is thinking of forming their own workers' comp insurance, like they do the rest of it. So I believe this, it's somewhere in the status, and this could be the first payment that will go eventually to MMRA. The reason that you have 204-755 for the amount budget before payment is very logical, and that's a fact, that it's to show us that there's enough budget in there to handle both the $10,500 and the $7,500. That number does not get diminished until there's approval and a payment.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further questions or discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah.
Unfortunately, I know John Selmy is not here, but I just wanted to check, Ian and Cement, I don't know who can answer that, but I just want to make sure that's not the company, Ray, you're probably more familiar with the company, that's not the company where we had problems with that one road. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Ian and Cement's been a good company for us in the past years, I believe.
Perfect.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, this is for fund transfers and current claims. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is from the reports from Mayor. That's for approval of payment for McMillan Group Incorporated for Contractual Services.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
I'm not exactly sure what to do with this, other than we need to, I believe, approve the payment in the amount of $50,375 for the work that was done in the demolition of the homes in question. The work was done, and so I guess my motion would be to authorize a payment to McMillan Group in the amount of $50,375, as outlined in 9A, because I believe we have the, the-
8A.
Or 8A, excuse me, 8A. We have the paperwork from Chief Volotorni.
Support.
Supported by Councilman Coniston. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman Bazey.
Again, I'm voting no. I mean, thank you for the chief for submitting that email, but I'm still not happy with this company. There, there's a report from the state that they actually had stopped them from working, and they needed to have water, and there's over 2,700 square feet of asbestos. And I'm not sure how they handled that, and just, this is just one house out of the three. So they had a stop order, and they brought a small, like, water tank, and then the pictures I submitted, there was a lot of dust in the air, and the pictures that I submitted, there's a lot of contaminants that was in front of the house, those homes, and the residents are still concerned about asbestos and lead that was in the area. So that's why I'm voting no on this one.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Which is good points by Councilman Bazey. I think we can get this cleared out, and then make sure that we go out and make sure we have a different company doing these demolitions in the future.
Yeah, there's no reason to keep going back to get a company that has a subcontract or subcontract or another subcontract. I don't know why the city's not hiring a company that's authorized and approved by the state to do demolition and abatement.
Well, I guess I've got concerns, too. Is the site okay now? Did they remove the asbestos that they detected and the other pollutants?
Madam Chair, I've talked to some of the residents, nobody came up to do soil samples or nothing like that. That's why I'm voting no on this one.
So it's not been corrected, and we're going to pay them, then they'll be on their way, and we won't have no recourse?
Madam Chair, is this a small contractor, minority contractor? $50,000 may drive them out of business. I don't want to get a lawsuit on behalf of the city, where he now says, "I had to go out of business because the city of Dearborn Heights didn't pay me."
But there's rules that have to be followed, too.
Council Chair, I believe this is a very small amount to get them out of our hair. Let's be done with them, pay them, and let's move on from here, and when we go to do next demolitions, we make sure that they're not one of the companies.
Well, if, my concern is if we're left with asbestos and stuff in the soil, we will be responsible ourselves for cleaning it up at our cost.
Madam Chair.
And that can get expensive. Councilman Abdullah?
Okay, but at the same time, just to be fair, we had, A, an investigation by our police department per the request of the city council, and it came back pretty much pretty clean. But also additionally, I went through the whole, all the answers and the whole nine yards from DAQ, and that would be specifically Joe Goetke, and he's got his email, phone number, the whole nine yards. And I read through the five-page report, and consistently across the board, it seems like all the Ts were crossed, all the Is were dotted, so as far as the state is concerned. And this is a body that is not necessarily, does not have any financial benefit in this. Okay, this was an independent body, they gave the okay on this. So when an independent body from the state gives us the okay on this, and then our police department does their own investigation, and they're okay on this, and then our DPW slash Building Department, whoever was involved with it, they're okay on this, our council attorney is okay on this. I mean, I just, we could do maybe more due diligence for the council's comfort level next time, that's fine. But I think in this particular case, just to be fair, I think the company should be paid, just to be fair. There may be some residents that have concerns, and I get that, because it's obviously, you know, I mean, I'd be scared if my house was near there. So I get that.
I'm thinking that, too, myself.
I totally respect that. I totally get that and respect that. But at the same time, I know just based on my business, sometimes people are fearful of things just because of the unknown, versus the experts, which in this particular case would be, A, the company that's doing it, which I get, they would be a little biased, but B, more importantly, the state that has no financial interest, that gave us the okay on this. So I think at this particular point, the right thing to do would be to pay them. We can't just reject almost everything. Just given my opinion.
Madam Chair.
Councilman Coniston.
Yeah, I wasn't a fan of McMillan Group. They were brought on to do these demolitions. They are a minority company out of, I think, Inkster, but it's, everything's been checked out, and there's not a problem. Asbestos is a risk for a lot of things, but I think the bill has to be paid.
Thank you.
Council Chair.
Councilman Wensel.
The people I talked to, their main concern was that during the demolition, there weren't, they were not using water to knock down the dust. And I'm in favor of paying them, but maybe not everything. If they're not doing their work the right way, might pay them the full amount. I mean, they knocked down the house, but the main, the four or five residents I talked to, they said that the dust was just flying. It was a light breezy day, and it was, they used no water to knock down the dust, which is, and you see it on TV all the time. They always got a big hose there watering down the house while they demolish it.
And that was our main concern when we approved them. We all discussed that. Would it be done properly? And they still didn't do it properly, according to what residents have witnessed, and they're our best witness.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I mean, I would approve paying them out, but I will tell you, I don't know what price tag we want to put on people's health. I'm really concerned that this company, you know, I mean, it hurts their own credibility that they didn't follow what they should have, the guidelines. I don't think we should continue using them. I think we should do a better job vetting this out, and approving, because, I mean, this is, I mean, again, that's somebody's health we're talking about. What price tag is that worth? We owe that to our residents to do a better job.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Let's, oh, I was going to vote-
Can I just speak to one thing about the process of demolition?
We're just going to vote on it now.
Okay.
I think it'll be-
I just don't want people to feel the impression that they didn't do their job.
Okay, at this time, we are going to vote on approval of payment for McMillan Group Incorporated for Contractual Services. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
No.
Councilman Bazey, Councilwoman Hicks, and Councilwoman Melonowski Maxwell, and Councilman Wensel is no. Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Coniston is a yes. Councilman Abdullah is a yes.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Hicks Clayton is a yes. So it passes. Okay, next, at this point, we are all ready to comments from council members.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
The last few days, I've received some phone calls about Detroit Street with rats. I'm going to, I guess through you, I have to ask our ordinance director if he's known about this, or has heard about it, and if not, what can we do? Can we go out and check somebody's abandoned homes on Detroit Street and find out what's going on?
Just tell them to call me now, because I haven't heard anything, so.
Now, I know there's one house that was a problem on Detroit Street. I've gotten several calls on that one.
Yeah, and we brought it up to the council meeting a few times already.
I've, you know, the thing is, is I've told people that they need to contact the property departments before they contact, contact us, okay? So I'm going to take it as they have contacted the property departments. So if you want to comment on that-
He's up there now. Let him comment.
Sure, so the only one that I'm aware of from prior was one particular house complaining about the next-door neighbor house. I have a, I'm lucky enough to have one of my full-time officers that used to work for Critter Control. He came to me from Critter Control. He's also, he's vector certified. I've literally sent him out there four times, and he is a trained licensed vector control person, and he's seen no evidence of rodents at that property. I will say the same thing that I said before. This particular person that I believe is calling you, I don't, I can't say who it is, but I do know that there is a particular person over there that is throwing poisonous rat packs from their property into neighboring properties, even properties that there's no evidence of rodents, which is dangerous, because those other properties have small animals, and they have grandchildren that visit on a regular basis, and the packets can be picked up, and they're poisoned, they're very toxic. There was a property behind the one I believe you were speaking of, that had a recycling pile, you know, for, they were putting food items out there to recycle and to compost. They were instructed to remove it, they did do that. I literally have sent that, my person out there three to four times. It's not his area, but I asked him to go in there and look around, he's looked around. I've talked to the owner of that property, who has tenants there, she's had an exterminator come out, they're not seeing what is being reported, so.
Can we, can we go out and take one more look just for-
Would you go with me?
Yeah.
Okay. So then, and then maybe, maybe we can officially put an end to it if we all go out there together.
No, I got one other-
Madam Chair.
Councilman Abdullah?
Is it a different subject or a same subject?
It's different subject.
Okay, if you don't mind, just, Councilman. So I'm really concerned about this resident, whoever it is, that's throwing packets across people's yards. What's, I mean, you don't have to name the person or the address, but I presume you're all over this, right?
Am I all over it?
To make sure that whoever it is has stopped doing this, obviously.
Well, I, well, there is a history with this person, I think, that you're all referring to.
I don't know who it is. I'm just saying, whoever it is has got to stop it.
It has involved some legal things, so, I mean, that's about all I can say on that.
Thank you.
I got one more item.
Okay. Councilman Muscat?
Even on social media, and plus the phone calls and emails about speeding in our city, we've got a lot of race cars out there, and they're getting more powerful all the time. And now children are using mopeds and go-karts out on the street. Are we, I don't know what to do about it other than being more vigilant by the police I don't know if Mr. Mayor wants to address that issue about what we can do with it.
Is there anything?
Police chief.
Police chief?
Deputy, uh, police chief is here, soon to be the chief, so.
Well, I, as, this subject's been brought up numerous times. We do have a traffic enforcement program that we use regularly. Officers write numerous tickets. We have zones that are dedicated that the officers are supposed to go to. If there is a problem with a traffic situation, call the police department, we will put it on our hot list, so to speak, and we will address that issue. As Chief Volotorni has said in the past, the traffic violations have to be witnessed by the officers before we can take enforcement action.
Councilman Abdullah?
Deputy Chief?
Please.
I did have a resident email me about the area, just since you're bringing that up. On Wilson, pretty much either side of Beach Daily, but most specifically on Wilson, because there's no stop sign, between Beach Daily all the way down to Gully, I guess a lot of people are just taking off on that particular street, so that may be an area. But I did have a question for you. From my little research, and I'm not an expert in that field, but just, and obviously, I'm nowhere near where you're at as far as knowledge on this stuff, but I'm just throwing it out there. For some people, it may be easy for them to pay a ticket of $100, $150, $200, whatever it happens to be. I haven't gotten a speeding ticket recently, so I don't know. With that being the case, is community service a better way to do this? Because if you catch somebody, and they can afford it, because they got a job, they pay it, and they move on with their life, and most of the younger generation, unfortunately, don't worry as much about, oh, insurance going up and what have you that the parents worry about. Is community service an option from a legal standpoint?
Well, we write the tickets, what happens with them, as far as payment and everything gets handled by the court.
It'll be a judge's decision?
Yeah, and I believe that there is a traffic court.
Actually, the answer is no.
You cannot do it?
No.
No, not for, not for a civil infraction. It's a fine, that's it.
Shame, because that would, that would work for most younger generation, I think, but, okay.
Thank you.
You know what I mean?
Thank you.
If I might, just to throw one thing.
Mayor, go ahead.
Living off of Beach Daily, and I like auto racing, but racing should be done on a strip, on a racetrack, and not on a street. And I've told a lot of the young people, I've challenged them, and I said, "If you really think you're cool and a great driver, why don't you follow me on SCCA or a drag strip, and that's where you do this." I will tell you that it's not unusual on weekend nights, and to hear the roar in these mopars, and I actually talked to some of the kids, and they're telling me they're leasing these 800-power mopars for like $250 a month. This is unbelievable, that you can buy a literal hot rod, a race car, for this, and they're using them on the streets, but I hear that engine, and they're drag racing, and we've asked the officers to watch, but it's hit and miss, because there's not necessarily a random that between 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning on Saturday or Friday, they're going to be racing. But I, but I recognize the engine sound, and I'm telling you, these are Challengers and Chargers, and I've looked out the window, and a lot of my residents, because I see these cars parked in the neighborhoods, the different colors of the vehicles. And I handed that over to the police, and, but the difficulty is, as the deputy chief said, an officer has to see it. Even though I seen it, I can't, they can't write a ticket based upon my observation, it has to be seen by a police officer. So we're aware of it, and we want to stop it, and hopefully, we will.
I guess I'm leasing the wrong vehicle.
It's definitely a problem. Definitely a problem.
If I can get that.
Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead. Councilman Bazey?
Okay, I have three items, but I see some residents here from Wilson, I'm sure they're going to address this issue with the one additional stop sign. I'll have them speak to it when they speak in a few minutes. The other item, I'm getting calls from residents, they'd like to see the ordinance regulation that, I don't know if the current council, my attorney, wrote this for the pension for specific individuals. Just wanted to see the ordinance, or if you can give me a reference, so we can look at it, that benefits certain individuals, not the residents of Dearborn Heights, to make sure that it complies with state municipal ordinance regulations about double dipping. This last item, I'd like to bring up, this is for the ordinance director, to see if they can go look at House 6862-Gully.
If you want to give me afterwards, I just don't like to do that, because it sometimes creates a target for people. But if you can tell me the street, and I'll get the address afterwards, but what's going on there?
It's on Gully, 6862-Gully.
Go to the address.
Okay, well, it's on Gully. This house has had a lot of issues, renters from one to the other, and the owner is not doing anything. I got a report, infestation with all kinds of stuff, bugs, mice, also black mold, and the current tenant just basically left the, left the house, has a lot of health issues. Talked to the resident, and the homeowner, actually, when the person vacated for health reasons, he decided to, you can actually drive by the house, there's a court order for eviction, even though she's been gone for a month from the house because of health issues, because of black mold and infestation. I strongly recommend for the city, either ordinance or the building department, go and recommend for the city, either ordinance or the building department, go and inspect the house, so the next resident that moves into the house does not have any health issues living in that house.
Yep, you can do that.
Thank you.
I'll write the address for you.
Madam Chair?
I think, did you have one more?
That's it.
Councilman Abdallah?
The resident was here earlier. Well, I, I just want to thank the resident that brought it forward in regards to the veterans section there. I can't see him.
Right here.
Oh, there he is, there he is, right in front of me. I apologize.
Yes, Mr. Jackson.
Apologize, apologize, yeah. So, I just wanted to thank you for bringing that forward, and I see that the city's done some work over there, and, and I do appreciate it. It looks a lot better. So, I just want to thank you for bringing that forward, because they get the respect that they deserve.
Any further comments from council members? Councilman Wenzel?
With my continued support of our veterans, follow up on that, I'd like all of our veterans here, including Councilman Bazzi, to please stand and be recognized. Any veterans out there? I too want to commend whoever was involved with the, I'm sure the mayor's office has something to do with it, cleaning up the memorials out in front. Memorial wall is looking good. Still, we're still waiting on the memorial statue. Is there an update on that, with the rifle and helmet missing on the memorial statue?
They said they would be here at the end of July.
End of July.
Coming from Minnesota, so we're kind of at its mercy.
Do we have a timeframe at all on that? Just end of July? That's tomorrow.
Yep.
So, it's, sometime soon, sometime soon.
He's in Minnesota. He's got it made. He's planning a trip out here. He's got three stops. When he gets here, he'll put it up for us.
All right, all right, thanks. Thanks, Lee.
Thank you.
Also, we have the Dearborn Heights Veterans Facebook page. It's going along pretty well. I'm gonna challenge all the businesses out there to go onto this Facebook site and offer our veterans some kind of deals at their business, something that they, we do for other people, and seniors. It'd be nice to have something special for our veterans. And also, is, I'd like to, an update on the playscape for the Swapka Park. Can we get a, is there anybody here can give us an update?
Director's father's very ill, so he is not here today. I do, I would not be in a position to offer you an update.
What about the deputy director? Would you know anything?
I pretty much know just as much as you guys do. He came and requested to go out for bids, and that's all I'm aware of as well.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Wisconsin.
Any further comments from the council table?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Muscat? Your councilor?
On August 10th, Saturday, we have our citywide garage sale coming up again, spearheaded by Maria Langlois and the Recreation Department. I think there's still tables available, and a lot of good stuff, tools for the men, clothes for the women. And just echo what everyone else has said, the speeding is a real problem in Dearborn Heights and in Dearborn. I know in Dearborn, they had tickets of young men driving over a hundred miles an hour down Ford Road, and until somebody's killed, it's, it's just, it's gotta stop, including the young person or the person driving the car at over a hundred miles an hour.
Council Chair, I have one more.
Councilman Muscat, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, the last meeting, we talked about Warren Valley Golf Course. Have you had your meeting with the managing company yet?
It is scheduled for this Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Because that, it will still happen as long as everything is fine with the director's father.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Council Chair, I want to one more.
Councilman Wenzel?
I wanted to restate the Facebook page. It's Dearborn Heights Veterans on Facebook. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comment from the table? At this time, we will open it up to announcements for the community.
There are still tables available for the garage sale. If anybody is interested, they're twenty-five dollars a spot, and you actually have quite a few in different locations that you can rent. I would like to remind everybody about the Dearborn Heights Senior Council Picnic that's coming up on Thursday, August 8th. It's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and this is my first event at the Warren Valley Golf Course, so I'm very happy and excited about that. I've met with Eric, and we've talked about doing some other events there as well, and the seniors are really excited about that, too. We also took delivery of our brand-new twenty-eight-passenger Smart Bus, the one that I received from a grant that I wrote, and it's pretty impressive, so I'm really excited about that. I got to see it. We, yes. Brought it home. We are parking it at DPW, and it is going to help us, number one, save money, because we don't have to take two buses out on every trip now. We can just take the one-twenty-eight passenger, and then if we have more, take additional. So, it's also gonna help with the sign-up of the trips and things like that. So, it's gonna be really exciting. All of the seniors are happy about it. I'm happy about it, ecstatic about it. And we will also be doing a ribbon-cutting for the bus that day on Thursday, August 8th as well. So, it's a pretty exciting day for Dearborn Heights. Thank you.
Good job, Kim.
Thank you.
Hey, any other public announcements? At this time, I will open it up to the residents for public comment. Please step to the microphone, give us your name, and you have a three-minute limit, please.
Good evening. My name is Khaled Moussa. I'm a resident of Wilson, and the corridor between Beach Daily and Gully. My neighbors and I have signed a petition, all of us. We are requesting that the council do something about getting us some stop signs, because of the speeding, which you have just mentioned earlier. And really, it's really been, it's very, very hard for us, because we have kids playing outside. In the summer, my daughter's going to high school this year, and she's gonna be walking for the first part, because it's right across the street from Beach Daily, from where I live, on Wilson and Whitefield. And my kids play outside. I have a new neighbor. The demographics are changing, and new people are coming in with kids, and we really need some stop signs on the south side, coming off of Beach Daily, because I live there, and I see everywhere. I'm on the corner house on Beach Daily, sorry, Wilson and Whitefield, and we really need some stop sign, like two of them, one on my side and one on Lou's side, because that would really, really stop these kids from flying up and down.
Council Chair?
Thank you. Councilman Muscat was first.
The deputy chief, is he still here?
Yes.
Can, can we send that over to Traffic and, and have them look at that closely and?
Absolutely noted, and we'll do.
Do you have any petitions with you, if you wanna?
Yes.
If you give them to me, I'll give them over to the deputy chief right now.
No, I made five copies. I knew there were a lot of them.
Just keep one, that, that.
This is the original.
Just hang on to them, like, just the one is good.
The key one is to the, uh.
Yeah, the police, it's the police that really need that, not us.
Yeah, Traffic Division can.
And hopefully, we can get multiple signs put up, not just one or.
We have to do speed bumps.
Pocket is the key, meaning the more tickets we give these kids, the more their parents are gonna feel it, the one, the more they're gonna stop. It's, it's tickets. The bigger the ticket, the more they will stop.
Councilman Abdallah?
Mr. Moussa, just quickly on this, so the Traffic Division's gonna do a study on this, and then they'll bring a motion forward for us to approve. I tell you, I personally, just because I haven't done an informal, just I see that all the time, based, you know, I'm driving through there all the time, through a particular area, and you're absolutely right. They do take advantage of the fact that you got three blocks or three and a half blocks of nothing there, and then people do gun it, or some, you know, younger generation do gun it. So, I am definitely in favor of putting either a stop sign or two, but just want to let you know, it does start with the police department first, and, but I am totally in favor of it, if they bring that forward.
I think all of us are in favor for that.
We're all in favor.
All of us are gonna be in favor of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment, name?
Hi, Amanda Briana's 4216 Croissant Street. I wanted to address the Detroit Street rats. Now, I was walking up and down the street. I walk a lot in my neighborhood. I saw the rats. I called about the rats. So, you can't say that nobody called. I did. And the young girl that has the rats, she has children, and they are coming out from the seams in her house. She has a rental house. That is ridiculous. And then, when I'm walking, I hear other residents on Detroit Street saying the same thing. I don't live on Detroit. I live on Croissant. I do not want them on Croissant, but I've seen them. I saw them at one o'clock. I was coming back from the drive-in, and I saw a cat with a rat in its mouth running across the street, a block from my house. This cannot happen. I had an exterminator over today. It's not gonna happen in my house, but you can't say nobody's called. I did. I saw them. It was during the day. So, I just wanted to address that. There's something we have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it's been going on since the flooding, so.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Hi?
Hi, Tina Doni. I live on Raymond. I just want to take a quick second to, first of all, thank the entire council for all the work they've done for Dad's Club this year. The fields getting them playable. It was a lot, toward the end of the year, it was a lot easier on the kids. It was a lot safer. There was a big improvement with just a little bit done. The bleachers that were put in, much appreciated. I walked around, we had a field day on Saturday, and I walked around with a little stick, trying to pick up the little gum wrappers that all the kids threw around, and just hearing the people comment about the fields and how much better they looked. It showed a great difference in our city. But I also want to take this time to, like I said, we had field day on this last Saturday, and thank all those that were present, or called, or had something to do with the field day. It was great to have you, have you there. We had some awards that were given out, and having our city back us up really was important to us. But I did want to give a special thanks to some people that donated to our field day, because this year was really hard. We tried some new things. We're trying to bring it back, trying to get these kids off the streets, and without them, it might not have been possible. It made it very successful. Kids had fun. We all had fun. Great day. So, I just wanted to thank Ray Muscat, Jamel Bazzi, David Abdallah, Bill Bazzi, Tom Wenzel. Anyone else? I, I forgot, but with the special donations for that day, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ed Jackson over in Kingsbury Street. We start off by thanking council members for acknowledging, I guess, my hell raising, for lack of a better way of looking at it. Again, I'm gonna do like I did last. I'm gonna try to do a prepared statement, so that I can keep my thoughts in order. I'd like to express my gratitude to the progress that has happened to our memorials. Lights have been repaired, junk cut down, upgrades are happening. Statue will be replaced soon. Like you mentioned earlier, I've also spoken to those folks. They're talking probably in the next two weeks. I believe the guy's going to New Orleans. He's gonna catch us on the way back. I will be aware of that, and I'll let everybody know about that, too. It's been long overdue. Through a meeting of, I understand you talked to the mayor tonight. He had a meeting with Commissioner Webb. Commissioner Webb is involved in part of what you've seen out front. She contacted Ms. Deidra Hope, who is the Master Gardener Coordinator from Wayne State. I met with her, and she explained some of the ideas for plants and such. Even explained that some of the plants may not be able to be planted right away, possibly not till spring due to our weather. The fact that condition of memorials have been brought up at numerous meetings by myself, Tom Wenzel, seems to have brought light to the problem. A week after Councilman Wenzel and I spoke at the meeting, and I'd mentioned over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people a year, roughly, seated in front of the city council, things started to happen. It just bothers me that it feels like I had to embarrass my city leaders into acting. Now, please replace the flags and show some respect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other further public comment? Your name, and you have three minutes.
I'm Mike Doni, Raymond Street. I'm with the Dad's Club. I also wanted to let everybody know, we're starting a fall ball season this year, and we're also having the flag football and cheerleading registrations that could take place at the Richard A. Young Center. So, thank you very much, everybody on the council, and Mr. Mayor, for everything you've done, and your continued support.
When is that gonna start, the registrations?
Right now.
Right now? Starts now?
Yep.
One, one thing everybody should be aware of, because very well deserved, but you were the recipient on Saturday of a award, and.
Oh, yes, sir.
And, and I, it was much deserved, but all the work that both of you do for D7 is great. You do it for the kids, and thank you on behalf of all the kids.
Thank you. Any further comment from the audience? Your name, and you have three minutes.
Hi, Diane Lucero. I live on Wilson. And just a side comment, I'm sure the chief knows already. If you do a traffic pattern study, it's gonna be different now than it is in September, because the kids are out of school. We have Crestwood High School. We have the Wise Owl Academy. We have the preschool, and we have Divine Child. All that traffic comes up and down our street, so it's not gonna be a true picture. So, that's just my.
Good point.
Thank you.
Good point.
Gary Mayaki Corporation Council, Plainfield Street. I just want to comment briefly on the issue of conflict of interest. I do not have a conflict of interest, and I understand the ethical rules that apply to me. The arguments that were put forward by the city council's attorney, respectfully, regarding me having a conflict of interest, were rejected. Moreover, my opinion, as stated and reiterated by Judge Hughes, was also upheld in that particular litigation. So, it, it is unfortunate, but one of these days, I'd like to have an opportunity to explain conflicts of interest to you in this context, because it's a little different. I represent the city as an entity, as distinct from its officers and employees, and I've always tried to do my best, and I've been doing this for well over twenty years, and I've represented the city in three different administrations. I would also note that I have concerns about making sure we need to be careful about making statements about city contractors, residents, based on things that we've heard from other people. These things should be investigated. The issue should be raised, but we need to be careful about making accusations, because these things can end up having consequences, and many of those consequences can be legal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Name three minutes, you know.
Good evening, Zohair Alham. I gave some of you a few pages from Plant Moran Audit, from 2005, 2006, up to 2018. Our mayor wants to bring Plant Moran to do the forensic audit, and apparently, they have been telling the administration for the last fourteen years what to do, and never was done.
That is wrong.
Including, including several years, I would note, seven years, they were talking about the retiree insurance fund. They ask the administration, year after year after year, and the papers are in your hands, to put, to start, put money in it, so it is easier for the future administration, and it is less burden on the taxpayers in the future. Not even one penny was put in it. Dearborn, next to us, put sixty-two million dollars in it, at the same period of time, we put zero in it.
Not true.
And Plant Moran, the administration didn't do their job, because they didn't implement what's in the report. And I'm asking you especially, Bob, Dave, and the president and vice president, please read those pages and see what those reports said, and you will see that the neglect of the duty of that office over the years is, it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing to me as a resident, when I went back and read all these things. The other thing I want to man, to say, and I take responsibility, and it's not toward you, Jack, because it happened before your time. Customer walked to my office today. He owns a property on Van Boren Telegraph, was rented. Some of the residents put firecracker inside one of the rooms and burned down. The police department came. I don't know what year it happened, but listen, please, to what I'm going to say, and I take responsibility, and the man is willing to come and testify in front of you. They, the police came and put out the fire with fire extinguisher. The fire department, apparently, wasn't called or didn't come, because the fire was a small. The next day, he had this fire in second room in the building. The previous director of the building in safety came in, and our mayor came to that building, and I, I'm sure he knows probably who I'm talking about, because I have his name and his phone number and his address. He demanded five thousand dollars to write a report for him, so he can collect the maximum money from the insurance. The next day, he sent the gentleman by the name Nimmer, and I'm not going to say his last name, and he told them, why don't you pay five thousand dollars and everything will be okay. You collect your insurance. He filed the police report with our police department. Nothing happened. And Mr. Bazzi and Mr. Ray, they brought the issue of the Gully House, and I FOIA'd the papers based on the request of the previous director. papers based on the request of the previous director. They gave me everything except the initial report about how much damage need to be corrected in the house. And at the end of the FOIA, they denied me that report, and they said, because of external investigation. I'm asking the mayor, what is happening to that investigation? Why we don't know about it, what happened to that investigation, and why the reason we don't have a director for the building and safety in our city for the last seven months?
Thank you.
And I am willing to bring that person, and he's willing to come here, but I did advise him to go again to the FBI, because that's the right route to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no idea.
Any further public comments?
Have we lots of comments, public comments, or are there not?
I really got to get right to Sue's ass.
I have to make a statement.
Motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned. Motion to adjourn by Councilman Muscat, seconded by Councilman Basie. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Meeting's ended.